Good evening and welcome to the August 11th, 2014 meeting of the City of Florissant City Council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lee Zabson Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shildroff?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Hernandez.
Let the record reflect that there is a quorum present. Before we begin, if there is anyone that would like to make comment in the comment from citizens portion of the hearing, please complete a speaker card located on the table next to the entrance of the chambers, and you'll hand that to the city attorney. It'll make its way down to myself. I'm sorry? We're getting ready to do that now. Item number one on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Caputa makes a motion to accept the minute meetings of July 28th, and that motion is seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Item number four, hearing from citizens. Carol Buzzetta. Carol Buzzetta. Ma'am, for the record, if you'll state your name and your address, please.
My name's Carol Buzzetta. Address 1080 Lindsay Lane, Florissant, Missouri, 63031.
Thank you.
Mayor, were you in favor or against bringing illegal immigrant children? Or, I believe Mayor Slay, did he ask you if the City of Florissant would take in the illegal immigrant children?
Ma'am, I should have announced that the hearing from citizens portion is not a question-and-answer session.
Okay.
However, if you wish to remain after the meeting, I'll personally stop and talk to you.
No, I'll make a comment now.
Very good. Thank you.
I would assume that there was, Mayor Slay came to or made knowledge that there were illegal immigrant children that he would allow to come to the City of St. Louis, and I can only assume that you basically said yes, that we would do that. My understanding, basically, the federal government is in charge of that particular aspect. You couldn't have turned down Mary Grove or any of the other centers within city limits that wanted to do that, but I would have said no if I were mayor's, or at least contact the city, Florissant City Police Department, and get their views on if they thought that that was a good idea, or get any intel that they may have about, you know, other cities that have done that, and if it was good or bad for that city to do. We've got loads of information about some things that the city members should be aware of regarding illegal immigrant, you know, and a lot of this information is from Border Patrol agents, former Border Patrol agents, what to look for, and things that I believe should have been taken into consideration before decision was made. I know that this is a question-and-answer session, but so you don't want to answer yes or no, whether you were in favor of it?
Yeah, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, you don't need an attorney to answer yes or no.
No, ma'am, but if you want to stay after the meeting, I'll stop and talk to you.
I would assume, since the mayor doesn't want to answer, that his meaning, or that he answered yes.
Mr. Hassel, can you explain to her the procedure that we have here?
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hassel?
I think that the council president tried to explain to you that this portion of the meeting is to allow citizens to come up and make comments. If you want to schedule other times to speak with representatives, whether it's the mayor or other representatives of the city council, that can always be done, but to come up and pose a question like that and then assume the answer is something, that's really not fair. Again, if you want to speak with the mayor or any other elected official, there are times and places to do that. This is not one of them.
All right. Next person on the agenda, Tom Buzzetta. Tom Buzzetta. Good evening, sir. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record.
Tom Buzzetta, 1080 Lindsay Lane. I also would like to comment on this idea of bringing the illegal alien children into Florissant. I have talked with Representative Jones. He has come over, well, he's talked with my sister a number of times, and I'm very grateful we have a representative who actually goes out of his way to try and listen and respect citizens by doing this. I am totally against this policy. For the past three weeks, I have been doing research on the illegals that have been coming through the border, and I can tell you that there are numerous problems. Various healthcare professionals have expressed concerns over various contagious diseases that we may be coming in contact with as a result of this, serious contagious diseases, some of them dengue fever, Tukayung, I can't even pronounce this name, even Ebola. Border Patrol agents have actually intercepted some illegal aliens coming over from West Africa, and these people are coming from areas where this current Ebola outbreak has occurred, and if somebody comes into our community with something like this, it's going to be a very unfortunate situation, to say the least. The information I've had distributed out to some of the council members, I hope they will take a very serious look at this. This needs to be addressed, and I don't know why we made some sort of agreement with Mayor Slay to accept these children without doing any kind of research, it appears to me. All you need to do is spend five or 10 minutes on the Internet, and you will find rafts of articles that bring up these concerns. So I hope that the council will seriously look at this information, and I'm not even getting into the possible MS-13 gang affiliations that some of these children may be coming up with. In the July 10th issue of Judicial Watch, the headline is "MS-13 Actively Recruiting Illegal Alien Miners at U.S. Shelters." The Department of Homeland Security has actually admitted that their, MS-13 is actually recruiting members right inside of the detention centers that these illegal people are being processed in. So we have the contagion concerns, and we also have the MS-13 gang affiliation concerns, and I just cannot believe that we would enter into something like this without doing proper research. The last page on the handout I had sent out, it's 12 questions that I, as a Florissant resident, and I'm sure many other residents, would like to have answered, and have some answers.
Mr. Buzzetta, your three minutes is up. I'm going to have to ask you to step down. Thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank you.
JZ. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. Sir, if you'll provide your name and address for the council, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My name's Jay Ziverdins. I'm 1102 Mercia, former resident of Florissant. On what they were speaking of, I think it's an affront to a public and open government that public officials won't answer public comments or public questions to be put on the record. It has to be done in a private manner. That's not why I'm here to speak. I'm here to speak about a sequence of troubling, a sequence of events that happened two weeks ago yesterday near Humes and Patterson that involved the neighbor of my father, who lives on Tremont Drive in Florissant. His neighbor was biking. He's training for a half marathon, and he was riding from St. Ferdinand Park to Sunset Park in the bikeway paths, or the areas that have been designated a pathway, when a motorist came up behind him and was not passing him. He waved to signal the motorist to pass him, and as the motorist passed him, that motorist pulled out a gun, a handgun, and fired it at him. He rode on, took down the license plate number, and immediately called the police. The police responded. An officer, Dave Rolfing, Rolfing, and another officer that I didn't get the name of, responded, took his information. I'm sure you can check the police records if you'd like to back that up, and they can, they decided to insinuate that it might have been a drug deal gone bad. My father's neighbor is a black man, and then went on to insult his intelligence while giving the description. I suppose he used big words, and the officer actually said to the gentleman, "You must watch a lot of CSI or shows like that because you're using a lot of big words." Now, my father's neighbor is a father of three. He's an engineer who's working on the St. Louis Arch Project downtown. He was in, obviously, workout gear, gym shorts, and a tee-shirt, so maybe he didn't look like one of you, but to be insinuated that you're of less than standard intelligence is unacceptable. He was shaken, to say the least, didn't go to work for a few days. His name's Mark. Mark Harris. You can look him up. I'm sure he's in the police report. He called the supervisor for the gentleman because he wanted to make a complaint. The supervisor defended the officer, and I just feel that to have our police to not take serious, a report like that puts not only my neighbor at danger, which his danger's gone, he's obviously, it was a random incident, but it puts everyone in the City of Florissant and the surrounding communities at danger. To have someone that has no respect for anything to fire a gun from a moving car at a bicyclist, and to then have police department not take it seriously is egregious, in my opinion. And with the events of the last weekend in Ferguson, I think we should really look to our police department to work on community relations. I have a saying, "A police force is only as good as its worst cop." We always talk about the urban cultures not snitching on their friends and their compadres, if you will. I believe that there's that culture in many police departments. I'm not here to disparage the Florissant Police Department or make an insinuation that they are dirty in any way. I just wanted to bring the situation to your attention and then let you know that, you know, and to the police, that if you're not calling out the cops and the police officers that...
Jay, your three minutes is up. Your three minutes is up. Thank you for your comments.
And I'll be looking for a response because I checked the box for a response, so if that's how it goes.
Thank you, and I'll remain after the meeting if you wish to speak to me. Kevin O'Donnell? If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but hearing the first woman, the first lady that spoke this evening reminds me of Section 110 dot 090, Hearing from Citizens. Prior to final passage of any ordinance, or person interested shall be afforded the reasonable opportunity to be heard there, far before the city council, in addition Let's just skip down to this, where it says, "Due to consideration, number of persons, maximum persons that can speak is one hour limit. Three minutes, as previously set out, to order to conform to the intent of this section. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member thereof. No person other than the council and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without permission of the presiding officer." I interpret that, I'm a layman, I'm a layman, I'm not a lawyer, but the way I read this, like I've read it before, and I've brought this issue up before. A discussion is not me addressing you and then going back and sitting down and maybe getting a reply later on, or speaking to somebody after the council meeting. A discussion is something like you can ask a question, I can answer, or I can tell you what I want to know, and go sit down, and you can give me your reply. That is a discussion. Now, a hearing is a discussion, and I can't see how, it's just not a question-and-answer session. I know this is the way it's been presented for the last umpteen years, or at least the last 10 years or so that I've been coming to the council meetings, and I think it's about time that they either follow the city code or rewrite it, amend it, and that would, but that would be having to maybe do a charter review and get a charter review commission. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Next item on the agenda is communications, and there are no communications. Item number six, public hearings. Public hearing 1408020.
In accordance to Section 405, 310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, August 11th, 2014, at 7:00 PM on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Fat Boys Barbecue LLC, DBA Fat Boys, to allow for the operation of a carryout restaurant for the property located at 300 St. Ferdinand. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard, and when in special needs, to contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing, we're calling 8397630 or 228395142.
Thank you. Is a petitioner present? Good evening, gentlemen and lady, and please state your name and your address for the record.
Eric Smith, 108 Keystone Crossing Drive, O'Fallon, Missouri, 63368.
Thank you.
Tracy Smith, 108 Keystone Crossing, O'Fallon, Missouri, 63368.
Torren Henderson at 1545 Jackson Lane, Florissant, Missouri.
Thank you. All right, you have the floor. Tell us about your project.
In a nutshell, it's basically, I've been doing barbecue for quite a few, there used to be a restaurant on Lindbergh. Some of you guys may remember, about 25 years ago, I used to work there, and I've just been doing it as a hobby, and working as a barber. I also own a barbershop on Lindbergh here. I've been there six years, and I've been self-employed for 23. So, a friend of mine, we've been discussing it for about 15 years, opening up a restaurant, opening up delivery, some type of business, and we just happen to see, been seeing this business and this building for several years now, and it's a low maintenance building, and we just decided we wanted to open up a restaurant and bring our brand of barbecue to this area.
Mr. Shildroff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Henderson, how you doing? We spoke today.
How was it?
Nice to see you. This property is located at 300 St. Ferdinand. For people who don't know, it used to be the old Goki Produce, and after that, it was a fish market for a short period of time. It was P&amp;Z unanimously passed it. I just had a couple of questions. As we spoke today, you have no issues with putting a trash enclosure on the property? I know planning and zoning talked to you about that. The pit you're going to be using is similar to the one at Dearburg's that's virtually smokeless, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any kind of smoke that does come out of that pit is more like a wisp, similar to Dearburg's now, right? Okay. How about your storage for your charcoal and wood? Can you talk about that? Where are you going to put that?
The charcoal we store indoors, we want a building enclosure on the concrete panels in the back. We have to, we'll hold whatever for a little bit of time after we speak with St. Louis County and figure out exactly what they're asking us to build, and we didn't get on their books because we know that existed prior to now, but we're now about to get on that thing.
Can you pick? Thank you. I saw, I went by the parking lot today, it looks like over the weekend, they resurfaced it, and they've already striped it, so it looks a lot better.
Trying to beautify it, and we're about to do some beautifying to the front exterior of the building as well.
It'll be completely carryout, correct?
Yes, sir.
And no liquor on the facility? That's right, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you told me you talked to a couple of your neighbors. They came by when you were renovating, is that right?
Several of them, at least in, just in my presence alone, maybe 20 or 30, and my business partner's wife always up there, and they're saying the same thing, that people are constantly coming up and pretty excited about what's about to happen over there.
Since A&amp;M Barbecue left, and then the other place at Rallo Plaza you talked about, I know we've had bandanas, but I know a lot of folks have been looking for a barbecue place close and, you know, in Florissant. Barbecue is extremely popular in the metropolitan area over the last three to four years. It's really booming. Places like Pappy's, and I know you're not going to be sit-down, but I think you mentioned in planning and zoning that if you guys do really well, you might expand to another place, or maybe put an oven in there and do something?
But we're definitely in that particular location, looking to add the larger oven that is attached to the building, and you'll be able to operate it from the inside with the doors on the inside.
And it all depends on your success, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And also looking for a bigger building if that does...
In the city? Okay. That's all I have right now, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, you guys already answered my question when you said barbecue, but I was either three little pigs or any barbecue. I know it makes like... Thanks.
Thank you. And sir, what will your hours of operation be?
I think it was 6 to 10. The council before you were kind of urging us on with time so that we wouldn't be locked in, and I believe we locked in there from 6 to 10.
6 to 11.
6 to 11. But we won't be in there operating at those particular hours all the time, just in case we have to do any prep work for a busy day.
All right, very good. And for the record, can you give us your rib recipe?
Absolutely not.
All right. I see no other council members with comments. Before we close the hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this public hearing? Seeing on Ms. Pagano moves to close the public hearing, that's seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? And the public hearing will be closed. Thank you and good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Next item on the agenda is old business, and there is no old business. Next item on the agenda, new business. Board appointments. Seeing none, requ... Oh, pardon me. Mr. Schmidt?
Chris Adrian. Yes, I do have one. I'd like to appoint Timothy Corey, 1935 Derhakey, Florissant, Missouri, to our Parks and Recreation Board.
Motion is made by Mr. Henke, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the appointment carries. Next item, request. Request for a full packer liquor license for CVS Pharmacy located, number 10355, located at 1550 South New Florissant Road. Councilman Shildroff moves to approve, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Roll call vote, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Let the record reflect it. The motion carries, the request carries. Resolution number 973.
Resolution urging state senators and state representatives to sustain the gubernatorial vetoes of Senate bills 584, 612, 662, 693, 727, 860, 829, and House bills 1296, and 1455, and 1865.
Mr. Shildroff moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. May I, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the resolution for the second time.
Resolution urging state senators and state representatives to sustain gubernatorial vetoes of Senate bills 584, 612, 662, 693, 727, 860, 829, and House bills 1296, 1455, and 1865.
Very good. Mr. Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in, discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Clerk, please read the bill. A resolution?
Resolution urging state senators and state representatives to sustain the gubernatorial vetoes of Senate bills 584, 612, 662, 693, 727, 860, 829, and House bills 1296, 1455, and 1865.
Thank you. Before the final vote is taken on this resolution, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Thank you, and please state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. I'd like to know all these resolution numbers, or these bill numbers, house numbers, whatever. Could you tell me, could you explain to the city what you're, what you're trying to pass this resolution for? What are these, what are these bills, each individual one? We don't know. You could be just reading off numbers that we don't even know. You know what I'm saying?
We're not passing a bill, we're passing a resolution.
Resolution, right, right. So, so it wouldn't make any difference anyway if I knew what they were, anyway, would it? You were still going to pass this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment before we take the final vote? Is seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Schmidt?
Resolution passes. Bills for first reading, Bill 9022.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Fat Boys Barbecue LLC, DBA Fat Boys, to allow for the operation of a carryout restaurant for the property located at 300 St. Ferdinand.
Next item on the agenda, agenda council announcements. Mr. Shildroff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank the city staff, the parks, street, and police department for their cleanup efforts after last Thursday evening storm. They did a tremendous job, and they're still in the process of gathering limbs. They did a great job under adverse conditions. I just wanted to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, I'd like to bring everybody's attention in Magazine Sauce. It's a local magazine that gets put out at one of our restaurants in my Ward, Ward 2, 503 Paul Avenue, is dog and fries. It's had been brought up in the big ragging up in here, which is good to see. Those guys started off not too long ago and had their kickoff at a restaurant, and I was there. I hope those guys are doing a good job. I'd also like to bring up Lindsay Lane is getting road built right now in Ward 2. Please have patience, guys. Everybody's been wanting the roads to get done, they're working on it now, they're working diligently if they can, but we cannot rush it. Beat horns, blow horns, they're trying to do the best they can, so please hang tight, and Lindsay Lane will be done shortly. Thank you very much.
Mr. Henke?
Yes, good evening. We have another council meeting before this event comes up, but I want to bring it up now. The Florissant Valley Memorial Post of VFW down here on St. Francis, 410 block of St. Francis, is going to have a memorial on September the 11th. Will commence at 7 o'clock PM at the VFW parking lot at 410 St. Francis Street, and it'd be on recognition of the local firefighters, police, and first responders. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just like to state that let's all hope and pray that we have a very quiet night in the St. Louis area tonight. Mr. Henke?
You reminded me, I saw before I came up here tonight, and it might behoove us all, just a small gesture, one of the TV stations was saying, there's a group out there saying, maybe we could leave a porch light on for a little serenity, for a little unity tonight. So when you get home, maybe a good idea to leave a porch light on. Stand is one.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start off thanking the Arch Dossis and North County area for doing a great job hosting the CYC City-County softball playoffs. We did have a couple champions, St. Angela girls team won, and also the St. Ferdinand boys team won. boys team won a baseball championship where you had a couple photographs in the paper for those teams. Just wanted to congratulate all the teams that qualified for the tournament. We had also Sacred Heart and also St. Sabina and St. Rose Philippine de Shane also had teams in the tournament. Like to also announce that there's going to be a horseshoe tournament on August, Sunday August 24th at Bangor Park. So anyone that's interested in the sport of horseshoes should call the Parks Department to get more information. This is hosted by the city of Florissant and the Florissant Ringers. $10 per person entry fee. Yes, in beautiful Ward 5 on Bangor Park. August is a very popular month for block parties. We had some very nice outings. We had National Night Out last Tuesday. We had seven block parties that night. They were very well attended. I attended those with Chief Lowry and several members of our staff and also we had a demonstration from our K-9 unit. And then also we have the food truck nights coming back, August 22nd, at the Knights Grounds to pro, some of the proceeds will benefit team and there'll probably be at least 15 food trucks, maybe more. We have potential for two mega block parties. We don't know for sure yet, but we have applications. And those who've been watching the Learning Channel know that there's a contest on TV with some, something to do with baking. And just in case two individuals get to the finals, there's going to be two big parties that's been applied for on a contingent basis on Tuesday, August 26th. One's at Yacavelli's and one's at Handel's. They're going to be huge. Also, we have, August is Florissant City Council Appreciation Month, so if you see a council member or someone that has served on a council before, please thank them. We are going to dedicate plaques in our Walk Through History on next Tuesday to former council member Dave Reynolds. He was also a state representative and also is a publisher of the Florissant Valley Reporter. And we're going to have that dedication at noon at the intersection of St. Francis and St. Charles Street, near where he had an office, that's prior to the Florissant Rotary Meeting. And then on Wednesday, August 27th, at, we're going to have, at 801 Rue St. Francis Street in front of Stem's Forest, we'll have a dedication of a plaque to the late Don Bond, Mr. North County. He was a Florissant City Council member for a long time. He was a county council member for a long time. He is famous for some of his picnics and gatherings and he was very committed to his constituents. And we're going to honor him on August 27th, right before Wednesday Night Out. And then also in August, August 30th at Bangor Park, we're going to honor Bob and Betty McLaughlin. We're going to name a pavilion after them near the, near the tank down there. Pavilion one will be the Bob and Betty McLaughlin Pavilion. We passed an ordinance recently to honor the first woman and the only couple to both serve on the Florissant City Council. We're also going to honor another female, the late Charlotte Ballard. She will be in our Walk of Fame and that's going to be on the September 24th, right before the Handel's Wednesday Night Out. Charlotte Ballard was a great citizen. She was the first master plumber in the state of Missouri and she was a charter member of the Florissant Valley Historical Society and the Florissant Old Town Partners, president of Florissant Valley Shelter Workshop, founding member of Friends of Old St. Ferdinand, soroptimus member, team volunteer. No matter how busy, she always made time to help others and did these kindnesses quietly, touching many lives. And her example of community service will always inspire us. And also, we're going to honor the late, great athlete, Dick Weber. He was the Arnold Palmer of bowling. As you may remember, he was part of that great Budweiser bowling team. He was one of the most successful bowlers on a PBA tour and he performed, he was on many shows like Dave Letterman. And he always reflected well on the sport and on his adopted city of Florissant, which he lived in since 1955 until his death. And also his son, Pete Weber, will attend. That's going to be at a special dedication prior to the Old Town Partners Meeting on Tuesday, September 2nd at 6:30 p.m. That's going to be at 801 Rue St. Francis. I had the Don Bond one wrong. That's going to be in the 300 block of St. Francis. The Dick Weber is going to be the one at 801 St. Francis Street. St. Ferdinand Lake is reopened and we will be stocking it shortly if it hasn't already been stocked. We don't like to say when we stock, but the lake is open, it's re-oxygenated. We're also going to be asking the council for some fairly minor expense equipment to add aeration to that lake. On a serious note, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Michael Brown and to the good people of Ferguson as the community deals with the tragic incident that occurred on Saturday, August 9th, and the unfortunate behavior that occurred last night. We, along with many jurisdictions, sent officers to assist the city of Ferguson in our hour of need and we will assist our neighbor and community with ongoing, with ongoing healing process. I've had frequent contact with our police chief, Tim Lowry, and his command staff and we continue to monitor the events that have been documented by news reports and discussed on social media since last Saturday. We take this matter very seriously and our first and foremost priority is the continuing safety and well-being of our residents. The chief and I want to let you know that we have and will deploy the resources necessary to ensure the safety of our residents, their property, and that of the businesses in Florissant. Protection will always be our first priority and the city council has always supported the administration in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of the city council will be Monday, August 25th at 7:00 p.m. Mr. Shildroff moves for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The council stands adjourned.